Welcome to the Bossier City Council meeting. First we'll have the invocation by Councilmember Jeffrey Darby and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Jeffrey.
That is right. Father, we thank you for this state that you allowed us to see. We thank you, Father, for rest on last night. We pray, Father, for those who are hurting due to the hurricanes. And we ask that you would help the victims. And, Lord, we thank you for those who are cheerful givers to those who are in need. Lord, we thank you for your son who you gave to us. We pray for those who are here. We ask you to bless their families and bless those, Lord, who serve others. It's in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Commanding.
Please join me in the pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all call.
Mr. Montgomery. Absent Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Hammond.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Maggio.
Here.
Council, in accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings laws and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the City Council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the Council on any agenda items may approach and state their names and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks or who shall become boisterous while addressing the Council shall be forthwith by the President pro tem barred from further audience before the Council unless permission to continue be granted by a majority vote of the Council. All remarks shall be addressed to the Council as a body and not to any member thereof. No question shall we ask a Councilperson or the mayor except through the meeting chair. All other audience members are asked to observe the meeting quietly. City Council has appointed the City Marshals as the Sergeant at Arms and they have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting. Council, the first item on our agenda today is the Bossier City Charter Commission.
Would you say, Phyllis? I'm sorry.
The Bossier City Charter Commission for ceremonial matters and recognition of guest.
Okay. Do we have, who do we have there from the Charter Commission today? Ms. Vicki.
Mr. President, we also have some Bossier youth leadership here today, too.
I do. I'll bring them up after the Charter Commission.
How are you, gentlemen?
Hello.
So, ten months ago, you gathered us together to, what we were told, to study the existing charter and to make recommendations to bring it up to date and to perhaps help the government function a little better. So, we've conducted town halls, we have had workshops, and we've had meetings here. We have compared and studied and compromised on different issues so that we could complete this task for y'all. When we started, little did we know the obstacles that we would endure. It has not been pleasant, but we have endured. And we think that what we have presented to y'all is a charter recommendations that are fair. They allow for term limits to be voted on, term limits that same use by the state. They're legally tested and proven. And it sets up new departments for y'all, such as an IT department. It makes changes to departments that are already existing. And it allows you to move forward faster in your procedures. So, in ending, I would like to say that I want to thank our past members, our new members who joined us, and to the core members who stuck by through thick and thin and hell. I appreciate you very much. And so, I am through. And I hope that the voters will look at this charter and seriously consider it because it is a definite improvement. So, any of my other fellow colleagues?
So, I'm Sandra Moorhardt. I live at 1317 White Hall Drive. I have been present through all of the different meetings. As Vicki said, we had three town halls, three workshop meetings, and eighteen meetings in which many of those we interacted with the department heads of the city. We listened to them. We listened to many individuals. We also all committed to individual hours of study and research time and many robust. And when I say robust discussions, they were with all commission members. So, through all of this, I looked at our commission members and I was really honored to serve with the diverse experience and the education and the expertise that we had. It was amazing how I looked at us and I felt like we represented the city of Bossier City. We were mothers, fathers, grandmothers, grandfathers, a nurse practitioner, an attorney, two seasoned, long-term Bossier City small business owners, a nonprofit executive, community leader, pastor, retired military, a wealth manager, a business executive manager in real estate, oil and gas, and property management, and a corporate finance and operations manager for the Fortune 500 company I worked for. So, all of us have been leaders in various political groups, community groups, and our churches. We live and work in Bossier City and we are Bossier City citizens. And we believe we took all of that into consideration when we developed what we believe is a governmental framework for Bossier City to succeed. So, I ask each of you, and you, Mayor Chandler, to accept and support this collaborative compilation of work from a committed group of citizens, Bossier City citizens. We took it seriously. We feel like the revised charter is reflective of all of us coming together and we feel like it will benefit Bossier City. And thank you for letting me serve.
Thank you, Ms. Sandra.
Let me, let me say.
Come on now.
Let me say, Mr. President, I'm just guessing. The most difficult part for a councilor was the term limits.
Correct.
I can say without reservations, I looked at the revision you made and I applaud you for doing the due diligence to do it the right way.
Thank you.
And I really do appreciate that because before now, I never felt like it was the right way. But I definitely feel like this is the right way. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. And I do feel like it is a fair, it is the fair way to do it, without targeting out individuals. I think we have enough targeting going on in our government nowadays, so I put it locally. So, it will be up to the citizens to either accept it or reject it. And I hope they will accept it because, you know, our biggest threat today is not somebody dropping a bomb on us, but it's a cyber attack. It's somebody dropping fentanyl in your water supply. And in the charter, we made provisions for these departments, you know, to protect our city and for y'all to move faster. So, we'll see what happens with it. But I thank you all very much.
Ms. Vicki, when, when will we get to see those?
And yes.
A few minutes, okay.
Yes. And also, while I'm standing here, Richard Ray, thank you so much. It's been tough going and he's been my hero. So, anyway, anything, any other questions?
You caught a lot of crap, didn't you, Richard?
Pull your mic down, Charles.
Mr. President, if I may.
You may.
I want to second Ms. Whitman's, that last thank you to Mr. Ray. Ms. Nottingham and myself were ex officio, ex officio members. I could never pronounce that word correctly, of that. And shortly after the process began, I fell ill. And Ms. Nottingham, and especially, I want to give a personal, public thank you for Mr. Ray for fulfilling my role. And he did a tremendous amount of work and assisted tremendously. And I just want to say personally, tell Mr. Ray to say thank you very much.
Those four-hour meetings. I said that four-hour meeting you had was just way too long. That's the one that happened to attend. The rest of it was on TV.
Yeah. Yeah. We had some bombs dropped on us, but we persevered.
You did.
We persevered.
But I want, Mr. President, I want to thank Vicki and everybody for doing the good job you're doing, the whole commission. For Bossier City, thank you.
Thank you.
You got a good heart.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Debbie Martin, one of six-yardly court. I was a new one to the commission, but I learned a lot. Very thankful for these people. They work so hard and very grateful that you listen to us. And thanks so much for everything.
Thank you.
Lee A. G. DeSinger, 400 Columbia Circle, Bossier City, Louisiana. Thank you, Mayor Chandler and the Council for appointing this commission. And to those citizens that have to vote on this charter once it's presented to them. You know, there were a lot of issues that were brought up, issues that you cannot fix with a charter. Those are issues of integrity, those are issues of ethics. And there were so many issues that the citizens brought to us that cannot be fixed with the charter. The only way those issues can be fixed is if the citizens of the city of Bossier, they're proactive and listening to what's going on at the council. If they're proactive in going to depose and vote for their elected officials, we cannot regulate on a piece of paper the ethics or nonethical issues of this body. That is not something we can do. You know, we can address issues of policy and procedures and we've tried to address that in this charter. But at the end of the day, the citizens of Bossier City will have a charter that they can vote on. They will also have the issues of term limits that they can vote on for the mayor in this city council. Those other issues, those issues are going to be addressed. The citizens have to be proactive and making sure that if this body makes a decision that they don't agree with, that they bring it to their councilmen, they bring it to their mayor, and they take the necessary procedures to correct that. You know, the only way any laws that have been passed by this body that the citizens disagree with, they feel like are in conflict with this charter, we can't go back and rescind those laws. Only this body can go back and rescind the laws that have been passed or the ordinances that have been passed in the past that are in conflict with the charter. And so, what we would ask is that whatever happens in the future with the election that's coming out, that if this council feel like there are issues that our citizens would be better served by if they go back and rescind some of those issues that have been passed that are in conflict with the charter, that this body has to do it. Because the only other way to do it is for a citizen to sue this council, this body. And I'm not one for us suing ourselves. So, things that we can fix, I think we have to come together in agreement as a body and say, there's some issues that need to be fixed and we're going to address those issues. But it's not for us to address every issue in this city in the city charter. And I think for everyone that has served, we've tried to do our due diligence to look at it from a broad view. You know, I've been told that I have a view, a glass view. I see everything from a glass ceiling. I try to be fair in every decision that we make. And I think we've done that as a commission. And it has been an honor to serve. And I think we've done our due diligence to put before this body and the citizens of Bossier our document that not only they can be proud of now, but we've also put some stipulations in it that they will have a charter review commission every so many years. So, we won't have to wait twenty years as we're in a fast-changing world to update something that may need to be updated that's going to make our city great. Thank you very much for the opportunity to serve. Thank you, Mayor, for your appointment.
Thank you, Lee. And I thank everybody that's served.
And I just wanted to inform the council and the mayor and that you do have today as a proposed add-on. There's two items that are proposed add-ons to the agenda. And that would be the resolution and the ordinance that would send to the bond commission for their review and consideration the items to be placed on the December 7th ballot. Mr. Jacobson and I have worked with outside counsel throughout this process and apologize for having to do it as an add-on. But number one, the last meeting of the Charter Commission was Friday at 1:00 PM after the agenda had already been published. And then the other issue is, we really just got word this morning that there is still an opportunity, probably, to get on the December 7th ballot. And if we can, if we can present it to the bond commission for their consideration, we felt it was appropriate to allow the council to have that opportunity, should you want to do that. So, it is two items. It's a resolution and an ordinance. And what would go to the voters in December would be the amended and restated charter, which is the charter that the commission has worked since January and to work through proposed changes. And they've worked tirelessly and have done a really, really good job of working together. And that is, there's some members that weren't on it when we finished, but those people also worked hard. And I'd like to thank them for their efforts as well. But everybody that has been a part of this, down to the department heads, each of you, you know, I've met with each of you in the beginning to go through things. And the mayor, we've met on multiple occasions on what were proposed changes. And it, you know, the process, it's just like any process through the legislative process. It's not always pretty, but people can come together and work together for the better, the betterment of our city. And I think that what is proposed is good. But the really good thing is, it's not y'all's decision to make. You put it to the voters and you let them decide. And I know that there's going to be some questions or some issues about, well, this doesn't impede in any way any other effort. You know, the court system can work through whatever. But this way, the voters of Bossier City will be able to evaluate a new charter that hasn't been done in twenty years. And they'll either adopt it or they won't. And then they'll have an opportunity to vote on term limits for the council and the mayor. And they'll either adopt those or they won't. But if they, the great thing about how the Charter Commission is sending it to you, and I think the way it would be sent to the voters, is that even if they don't adopt the new charter, which I hope they do, but even if they don't, they have an opportunity on term limits to vote on that. And it would either amend the existing 2005 charter or it would amend the charter that's in what will be Proposition 1. So, the voters will get to choose whether they want this new charter or not. And they'll get to choose whether they want term limits or not. And that's what democracy is all about. Let them, let them have the choice. But we'd like to ask the bond commission to consider putting it on for December 7th, if we still have time to do that. And that's why these items would be as add-ons and I would, I'm just giving you that explanation. So, any questions?
This would require two votes?
Well, it's two votes because there's a resolution and an ordinance. You talking about to add it to the agenda?
No, to get it to the bond commission, that requires two votes.
I don't understand the question.
It's just.
It would require two hearings.
Oh, well, there's a, the resolution today would be to call for the election. And then there's an ordinance process. And so, the ordinance would be introduced today. And then the ordinance, the second reading would be at the next meeting. But as long as the resolution calling for the election is passed today, then the bond commission has an ad hoc meeting prior to the Secretary of State finalizing the ballot for December the 7th. So, the key date would be that if, you know, it's y'all's prerogative to do whatever you want to do. But if you don't add on the resolution and the ordinance and pass at least the resolution and that first reading of the ordinance, then we won't be able to make the December 7th ballot because there's not enough time to get on the ad hoc meeting. So, it's two votes because it's a resolution and an ordinance.
And you just said something a second ago. You said, "We don't, we don't vote on it. We just..."
That's correct. You're just sending it to the voters. You're voting, you're voting to put it on, on the, on the December 7th ballot and allow the voters to vote on it.
Because 21.01 of the charter says, "City council shall submit this amendment to the people." Just like 5.01 says, "City council shall submit petitions to the people."
Well.
It's the same process?
When you send it, right. You have to send it. But if you don't send it today, you won't make December 7th. It'll be sent some other day.
I'm just making sure that the language is the same in those two chapters. Shall.
I believe it is.
It is.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Do we know what the special election is going to cost the taxpayers of Bossier City?
Yes, Councilman Hammond. It's on there. It's the same, it's the same estimate. It's $14,400 or whatever it is. It's in, it's at the bottom of one of those. It's on the proposed. Yeah, and it's part of the application, but it's. Yeah.
And we've missed, totally missed it for the, for the November. There's no way the bond commission can?
No, that's correct. There's already, I mean, there's ballots have already been printed and mailed and sent in for November.
Oh, well, that's no big deal. I mean, everybody else just fills out the paperwork.
Yeah, that deadline was, I think that deadline was April. Yeah, April 17th, I think, from memory. So, it's long gone. But, okay. Any other questions?
Thank you, Richard, for your work on that thing. I know you've been here a long time and met many millions with them, so I appreciate it.
Well, I appreciate it. I mean, it's, you know, I'm in my job and just, I'm used to people saying things about me. And, you know, I got thick skin. I really commend these citizens that, that, you know, got to experience some of that. But it's okay. That's what, they're all, they're all courageous. And I thank all of them that worked in any capacity. It's been an interesting process. So, thank y'all.
Thank you, Richard. All right. Where's the young ladies at?
Bossier Youth Leadership?
Yeah. Y'all come on up.
Lydia didn't know she was going to have to speak today.
So, who are you with? And give us your name and what school you go to, please.
My name is Lydia Inkie. I'm with the Bossier Youth Leadership Team. I'm one of the, one of the students there and I go to Benton High.
You were by yourself today?
Yes, sir.
Nobody else wanted to come?
No, sir.
Because they knew you were going to have to speak. Well, we appreciate you coming today, though. Thank you.
Hey, Council, there are three items under approved the agenda. The first one, Agenda Change Request, would be to amend the agenda to delete new business, item number seven. That's the ordinance concerning change order number 12 for the constructions of Citizens Bank Drive roadway. They're going to resubmit that once they get a language changed in that. And so, they're asking for it to be deleted today.
Hey, Phyllis, I don't, I don't think your microphone's working. All right. That worked. I guess I just can't hear today.
Amanda and I played with microphones the other day, so. Is that better?
Yeah, that is. Thank you.
So, it'd be amend the agenda to delete new business, item number. So it'd be amend the agenda to delete new business, item number seven.
Counsel, can we get a motion? Does it move?
Second.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? All right, so we're going to delete item number seven off the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Please cast your vote.
Mr. Smith, did yours pop up?
Oh, I'm sorry. Wait, it did.
Motion carries. I'm not sure why it's not popping up there. And then the next item would be to add on new business number 16, adopt a resolution ordering and calling a special election to be held in the city of Bossier City, state of Louisiana, to vote upon the adoption of amendments to this current city charter of the city of Bossier City, make an application to the state bond commission, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. And this item is being requested due to the bond commission deadline. It's a first and final reading, and it's being requested by Mr. Ray and the charter commission.
Mr. President, I make the motion to add under new business, item 16.
I'll second that. All right, Counsel, any questions on that? Any questions from the audience? Here we go.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor. Putting this on the agenda sounds great in theory. However, where is the term limits petition ordinance? Did we forget about it? Hundreds and hundreds of people participated in the charter commission. He, Richard Ray recognized that they did and said it was a cool process for us. But some of us also spent countless hours, not to block what was happening, but to make sure that these two petitions that were signed and certified by the registrar of voters were acknowledged. And not a single acknowledgement for the hundreds of citizens that participated in this process as well. Shame on y'all. We all have jobs, we all have things too. But we tried to also make our city better. And for y'all to block the people's petition continuously shows us exactly who you are. Do the right thing today. If you're going to put one on the agenda, put the other one on the agenda. Let them go to the bond commission, because like Chris Smith just said, it's "shall." You shall do it. Let's do our jobs today, guys. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Robert Wright, I live at 6307 West Oxbow Circle. Question or two, and you may not, you may not know the answer to this. On the council members at large, are we going to have an A and B district, is that right? That's what I've heard.
I haven't seen the revisions of the charter, so I couldn't tell you.
I can't hear him.
I haven't seen the revisions of the charter, so I couldn't tell you.
Okay, so y'all will be able to answer?
Richard, do you, do you know that, Richard? I heard that, too.
Yes, that's included in the amended and restated charter. And Councilman Smith, that's, the most recent version is on the website. It's been there for probably about a month, maybe more. The last one, I think it's the September 10th, the September 12th version, it's, it's available on the website. There'll be a redlined version that goes to the bond commission that we'll also put up there. But it's, it's all of the verbiage is in that September 12th version. But there will be, in the proposed charter, the at-large districts will be, they'll still be the entire city, but they would be at-large District A and at-large District B. So it would be, everybody wouldn't run against each other in one election. If people would qualify for either A or B, but they would still, the winner, there'd be two that would represent the entire city.
Other question I would ask is the term limits, and I'm sure Mr. Ray can answer this for us. Are the term limits on this thing, are they retroactive or not for the, the new charter?
I think the charter commission, they're not retroactive, are they, Richard?
So it's not retroactive, or it is?
It's not.
Okay, thank you, sir, thank you, Counsel.
I'd like to note this time that I'm not going to be dismissed on my questions about the agenda. I also agree with some of the other...
Say your name, Magistrate, please.
Alice Boyer, 5041 Highway 80, Haughton, Louisiana. I'm glad to see that there's a possibility of some agenda items being changed on here. Because I agree with the fact that I think it's a great idea that this gets approved and added to the agenda. But the other item that the citizen put through needs to be added to the agenda also. It should have been added previously. The other thing that needs to be added to the agenda is this situation that involves the community. The, the, the support that is being given to the United Nations in the form of a refugee...
Ms. Boyer, no.
I am not going to have my speech...
We're not talking about that, that's not on our agenda nowhere.
It needs to be on the agenda, it needs to be on the agenda. It says 2025, it's the United Nations, and you're sitting there and you have a councilman that has put this up as a possibility for regurgitated money from the... No.
We're not talking about it.
It needs to be discussed, you need to explain to the people that if I'm wrong, if I'm wrong, explain to them how I'm wrong. Explain to them how this is not going to happen. Explain how this is not going to happen.
I'm just going to ask you to sit down, okay? I'm going to ask you nicely, just sit down.
You're going to interrupt my three minutes and me pointing out some important factors on this situation. You all want to sit us, us down about the, our term limits? Y'all have shut us down by this term, this coalition anyway. So why is there not going to be equal handling? And why do you want to shut me down again when this is important about the safety and the welfare of our community?
This is your second time, I'm going to ask you to sit down again, okay?
Is my three minutes up? No, not yet, sir.
But you're not going to sit there and scream and holler, or we're not going to talk about what you want to talk about?
Okay, I, I'm going to calm my voice down.
And we're still not going to talk about that. I appreciate you calming your voice down.
You don't think, well, you don't think that the people want to know about this?
If you know about it, I'm sure everybody knows about it.
No, I doubt that, and I think it needs to be discussed publicly.
Well, then go have a meeting in your neighborhood, discuss it publicly.
It says "we," does this couns, is this council involved in it? It says "we," sir.
That don't mean nothing.
The, the words are clear, all through this letter, "we."
Okay, so, listen. I'm asking you to sit down nicely, and next time...
You're not asking me nicely, and you're disregarding me again.
Next time we'll have you escorted out.
Is my time up, sir?
It don't matter, I'm telling you.
You're denying me my First Amendment right to speak about something that is of concern to this community?
Marshall, could you just come escort her out, please?
Are you going to arrest me, sir?
We're not going to arrest you, we're just going to escort you out of the building, that's all.
I will walk out.
All right, Counsel, I think we're under approved the agenda? Are we still adding things to it?
Two more.
Okay.
Ruth Pope Johnston Tillman, 7111, Bossier City.
What was her name again, I'm sorry?
I'm, I'm sorry, oh, Ruth Pope Johnston.
Ruth Johnson?
Yes. You can give away my dad, that's okay. When the citizens of Bossier go to vote on term limits, they will not see themselves represented in that vote. Over 6,000 people signed petitions with version C. We call version C "the version of the citizens" for term limits. And that version included retroactivity. But it will not be on the ballot for citizens to vote on. The petitions were certified. Judge Parker Self judged, ruled that version C should in fact be put on the ballot. And the citizens' version was hijacked in a commission process where the definition was redefined, the people's definition was stripped, and it's purposely convoluted and disingenuous. And now I've even heard you start to say, "You'll get to vote on term limits." No, they won't. So let's not sit here and play games. We all know what happened here. So Bossier residents will not be voting on term limits of their choosing unless you change it today. Judge Self said it should be on the ballot. And the bad thing is that you use our money, the taxpayers' money, to strip it off the ballot. It's inexcusable. The people have spoken, they spoke in every way they can speak. They spoke personally, they spoke in petitions, and they spoke through the court. So are you going to add it to the ballot choices or not? That's the question before you today. We'll be watching, and I promise you, we'll be voting.
Thank you. Anyone else wants to speak?
I, I have a question, Mr. President. And y'all, y'all can, the attorneys that have more degrees than me can tell me to stop if I can't talk about this. We are still in Second Court of Appeal, correct?
We are.
On that, so we're putting this in today. What is in the Second Court of Appeal, does that, whichever way it comes back, does it override what we are putting in today?
Well, my understanding, Councilman Hammond, is, is that the Second Circuit Court of Appeal has this item docketed for their November docket. That November docket is the week of November the 18th. That's during early voting for the December 7th election. The, the Second Circuit would not have a decision on it until after they have it on their docketed week. So there's not going to be a decision on the lawsuit of Ms. Rogers until after the December 7th election, or at least until after that deci, that election had started. So the people's petition, as it's, as it's been called, and that's what I think it was called in the court hearing I was there, is still viable and could be adopted at a later date in a later election. And so the people could reject this charter altogether, they could adopt this charter altogether. They could adopt this version of term limits, they could reject this version of term limits. When that court case resolves, a court's either going to send it back to y'all and tell you to put it on a ballot, or they're not. But if they do, it'll have to be on a ballot after December 7th. But that's all the more reason to go ahead and have this amended and restated charter put to the people now, so that there's not an issue with the charter being after any proposal for term limits.
But I, I understand, I understand both, both sides of what's going on. And it, i- it's, it's no secret I was for term limits. I, I mean, I, I ran on that, 78% of my district was polled, and they, they agree with it. But what I don't agree with is what we're doing here when, yes, the citizens of Bossier City did speak by signing that petition. And I, I have to agree that we are, it's a slap in the face to a lot of citizens that stood there, listened to the spill, they signed it, they agreed with it. We're already paying for a special election for this to go on. Why don't we just hold off until after November when this is heard? The worst-case scenario is that we have to wait until March, when we're going to have an election anyway. Or call for another special election, you know, before that. I, I think that every citizen in Bossier City has the right to speak, and they did by signing this petition. And by us doing this, I, on one, you, you know, I, I wish that we could have done this, you know, the simple way and not had to have, you know, had a, had the term limits coalition go out and have to get signatures and all that, where we all could have just agreed on term limits in here and, and been done with it. But we didn't. But they did, I agree with what the, the charter commission did. They came up with it, it was a hard battle, it was, you know, it was, it was a ruthless battle. There was a lot of hurt feelings, there was a lot of stuff said that shouldn't have been said. You know, everybody is human, everybody has different views on what is going on here. But I think that everybody has the right to vote for which one they want. They either can vote for the term limits, the way that it is set up through our state government, or they can vote on retroactivity. I do think both of them need to be on there.
Well, all I can speak to is the charter commission has sent you a version, and the council is, is obligated to send that to the voters. Whether you send it, if, the only way that you'd be able to send it to the voters on November the 7th would be to add it to today's agenda and then pass the two items by affirmative vote. And so if you don't send it, if you don't pass it, add it to the agenda and pass it today, it won't be on the December 7th ballot, but it'll have to be on a future ballot.
But what you just said, I don't mean to interrupt you, what you just said, we're kind of going against what our charter already says. When they turned in their petition and everything was confirmed on their petition, our charter says we shall.
Well, but that version, Councilman Hammond, as you know, that version is, is, is in the court system right now. This one is not.
Well, we're not going to talk about a lawsuit, we can't do that, but, but it's in the judge's hands, it's not in our hands.
Actually, you can right now drop the law, drop the appeal, vote on it today, and it all can go to the ballot.
Yeah.
You don't have to have the dropping it on the ballot, I mean, dropping it in the board.
I would say, Mr. President, rather than taking com, more comment on this, we have to come back in just a minute and vote on the other item to be added, then there'll be an opportunity for public comment on that. So I would just ask that any public comment be on that other item.
We just keep following our, our agenda.
Right. Councilman Hammond, does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm good for right now.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Phyllis, we have to approve the agenda today?
No, sorry, you're, you've got to approve this item. There's a motion by Mr. Darby, second by Mr. Williams, to add to the agenda new business number 16, adopt a resolution ordering and calling a special election to be held in the city of Bossier City, state of Louisiana, to vote upon the adoption of amendments to the current city charter of the city of Bossier City, making application to the state bond commission and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
We have a motion to put it on there?
There's already a motion in a second, you just need to vote.
Any questions from the audience?
I've already gotten that.
Questions from counsel? Please cast your vote.
You've already gotten...
We've already, we're in the middle of voting.
You already gotten that.
We're past that right now.
So it's not questions? Oh, I apologize, you asked for questions.
Yeah, we're past that, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
There'll be questions on the next one as well.
Yeah. All right, Counsel, cast your vote.
Motion fails. Let me pop it up. I don't know why it's not popping up, let me pop it up. Motion fails. Next item, new business number eight. I'm sorry, it would be new business number 16.
That was 16.
17.
Well, that one, that one would be...
Bill, I got it, you got it.
That one didn't pass, so this one will be 16. Because seven got deleted.
Mm-hmm.
So this will be new business number 16. Introducing ordinance proposing amendments to the city charter of the city of Bossier City as recommended by the Charter Review Commission. This item is asked to be added to the agenda due to the bond commission by the city charter commission and the Mr. Ray.
I make the motion, Mr. President, to add item number 16 under new business.
I'll second that. Any questions from the audience?
Good afternoon, Tyree Venus, 1820 East Texas Street. I would ask the council to vote down this. The big thing in the room, term limits. The citizens have a petition that is currently in the courts. My concern is different than a lot of people's. I am for term limits. However, my option... However, my option is an option that's before the council today. But I'm asking you not to go forward and send the option at this time. The council, it does say that you shall send it, but it does not say that you have to send it right now to get it on the December ballot. My fear is, this will get on the December ballot. It passes, I get a win, yay. Then in March, if the court says that the council has to put the people's amendment on the ballot, now their amendment is on the ballot in March, and then that will come and take, if it passes, will then come and take the place of what we just voted on in December. So I ask that we have it where all three can be on there. So if the citizens decide that that's what they want, that's what they get in the first place, if not, that it can be voted down. Maybe my option is what it is, or maybe the option of no term limits. But I ask that all three, even though that is not my option, I may not be fighting for it, but I will fight for their right to be able to put that option up. Thank you.
Cassie Rogers, Bossier City, Louisiana, 7/11/12. Mr. Hammond, since no one will answer your question directly, I will. We, the Bossier City Term Limits Coalition, brought the lawsuit. We won. The council, excluding yourself, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Chandler, decided to appeal that decision. Excuse me, gentlemen.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Decided to appeal that decision. Now, they can drop their appeal today. That has no bearing on whether this could or. The only thing it would do is keep tying it up in court because their lawyer has decided that that's what they're gonna do, or they've decided and they've instructed their lawyers. So your lawyer and my lawyer, we're on the same page. It should have already went to the ballot for December 7th. Or December, I think it's the 7th. So actually, if you guys put both of these forward today, they can go, both go on the December ballot. The problem that I think is gonna be is that it would affect the March election, which these men don't wanna do. Because I think they're afraid that the people's petition, the one that 3,000 people signed, that's the one that's gonna win, and then they won't be able to be in this office again. So yes, you can send them all today. All of them.
Richard, do you wanna respond to that? Well, I think at this point, it's a moot point because you gotta have the resolution, and it just failed on the last item. So it's, you'll have to send it to, you have to under the charter to send it to the people, but you'll have to do it some other day than December 7th, so.
Sandra Moorhardt, 1317 White Hall Drive, Bossier City. I just need clarification because what I saw on the screen passed and didn't fail. Was it the wrong one that popped up?
Has to be unanimous.
Has to be unanimous.
Okay, so it's just not a majority?
Correct.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Did it show that it passed?
It said pass just because there was only one person voting against it.
Questions from the council. Counsel, we have any question about adding number 17 to the agenda? Somebody 16. 16, I'm sorry. Any questions from the audience? Okay. All right, counsel, please cast your vote to get us all confused.
Mr. Hammond, did yours pop up?
I think my machine is so confused right now. Motion carries on that one. Motion carries on that one. All right. So need a motion to approve the agenda as amended. And what's been done is number seven under New Business has been removed, and number 16 under New Business has been added, which is an introducing ordinance proposing amendments to the city charter of the city of Bossier City as recommended by the Charter Review Commission, first reading.
Make the motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second that. Any questions? Counsel, any questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Minutes?
Say again, Phillips?
Approve the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the September 24, 2024 regular council meeting and a spin with the reading.
Second.
Any questions? Question from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Witness opening of sealed bids for P-24-08 Municipal Building, Chiller Number Three, replacement, rebid.
Before you open those bids, what was the reason for the rebid on this?
There was an error on the bid form.
I'm sorry, do what?
There was an error on the bid form.
Okay.
There's some information on the bottom that was left off, my error. But to be legal, I had to send it, kick everything out and rebid.
Okay.
Good afternoon. It is a rebid for the municipal chiller number three. There was one addendum on this project. Engineer's estimate is still $450,000, and it was approved by the sales tax capital budget to be replaced. And then the authorized engineer plans was ordinance 51 of 2024. The first bid is from Boyer's Mechanical Service Incorporated. He does have a cashier's check in lieu of bid bond. Addenda is acknowledged, and his bid is for $389,950. The next bid is from Payne, the Payne Company. They did have, they do have a bid bond. They did acknowledge their agenda, addenda, and the total is for $397,000. And the last bid is from Premier Plumbing Heating Cooling Contractors. They have a bid bond. Their addenda is acknowledged, and their total is $410,000. I ask that you.
What was that price?
410.
Oh, 400, and I thought you said 100 and T M.
No, 410, sorry. And I ask that you approve the reading of these bids.
So move? Second. Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Not sure why it's not popping up, but motion carries. All right. Public hearings and actions on unfinished business. Adopting ordinance amending ordinance 12 of 2024, appropriating an additional $17,077.81 from the Water Capital Contingency Fund to replace the reservoir pump station generator. Final reading.
So move, second.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance authorizing the transfer of the Oshkosh Defense Max Pro MRAP Mine Resistant Ambush Protected Vehicle to the Louisiana Federal Property Assistance Program. Final reading.
So move, second.
Any questions, counsel? I think we talked about this last meeting. Questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to amend the 2024 sewer fund budget. Final reading.
So move?
Second.
Questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to amend the 2024 water fund budget. Final reading.
So move? Counsel, do you have any questions? Any questions for the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Public hearing concerning the city's application to the United States Department of Justice to participate in the Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Assistance Program.
So move, counsel?
This is our JAG grant we apply for every year. Part of the stipulations, there are several things that go. Y'all have an item coming up later on the agenda to vote on. We have to have a public hearing. We have to post it in the paper. The posting has been done. This is the public hearing part, and then y'all will vote on it. It's a grant that we get every year. We fund various patrols with it throughout the holiday season. It comes in one lump sum. We split it with the Sheriff's Department. I think our total this year is $26,000, $27,000. That'll go to fund overtime for the officers to work different task forces throughout holiday season, so.
All right, I'll make a motion, I mean, I'll open a public hearing. You know, what do you got anything to ask questions about? No questions? All right, counsel, close the public hearing.
Okay. New Business. Introducing ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement between the city of Bossier City and the Louisiana Department of Children and Family Services to designate the Bossier City Civic Center as a medical need shelter site in the event of a declared emergency. First reading.
So move, second.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions for the audience? Counsel, cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance appropriating $1,600,000 from the 2018 LCDA bond fund for all project closeout costs and approving report of change orders nine, 10, 11, and 13 in the amount of $1,322,930.53 for the Walter OBB Carriageway Phase Two project. First reading.
So move, second.
Counsel, any questions?
Mr. President? Does closeout mean there's no additional changes in the future?
Councilman Darby, this would, what, the plan for this measure would be to close out the current work. I don't have a crystal ball to say there's not gonna be something looming out there, but we did our best to encapsulate everything that we have visibility on there. So if there was something else, it would be something the council decided to add to the project while, kind of while we're there working on that. But this has been a lot of work on getting these change orders formalized between the city and the contractor, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Ben. Any questions from the audience? All right, counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to provide $200,000 in supplemental funding for the city's Energy Efficiency and Conservative Conservation Block Grant to enhance and replace street lighting with modern and energy-efficient LED lighting using the 2024 Riverboat Gaming Capital Projects Fund. First reading.
So move? Second. Counsel, any questions?
This is on East Texas, Mr. Rosamach, where this is gonna happen? How, your diagram doesn't show the full length. Where all is that gonna?
The intent would be, as far as we can take it, Councilman Hammond, and so as far east as Red Shoe Bayou.
Okay.
And, you know, west all the way to Red River, essentially. There's quite a bit of lighting in there. We're gonna focus more from, say, Airline Drive east over to Red Shoe Bayou. And I don't know if it's clear, but a major portion of this is being reimbursed. We're just asking the council for the full amount, but you're gonna get, you know, quite, almost two-thirds of that back.
You can do that once a year?
I wish. This is grant.
Yeah, I mean, you can apply for it once a year, or is it however?
Do you know?
Okay.
So anyway, it'll be.
So we could reapply for another one in '25, then?
Yes, sir.
And continue this all across the city?
Yes, sir. We're also the recipient of some grant funding through Capital Outlay to do a similar measure, trying to focus on those major corridors, getting those better lit.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Ben. Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to approve report of change order number one for the Wallbrook Park Maintenance Building Project with an increase of $11,010.23 for a total contract price of $490,101.23. First reading.
So move? Second. Counsel, any questions on this? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance enacting Section 110-115 of the Bossier City Code of Ordinances prohibiting the parking of vehicles in front and side yards. First reading.
So move?
Second. Brian, would you explain what you wanted?
Yeah, basically, there is already an ordinance on the books allowing the MPC to try to handle of the vehicles being parked in front yards. If people call and complain about it, they do, they can come out. They don't have really the right to, they can write a little, a little posting ticket. Basically, this is giving our police officers the power and the authority, if called, on a complaint to write a ticket where the people would have to show up in our city court. It's not that the police department is gonna be riding around looking for cars parked in front yards. They've got, they're understaffed as it is, so they have plenty to do instead of worrying about cars and yards. But this does give the homeowner a little bit more power to call the police. You're trying to sell your house, and your next-door neighbor has four cars parked in their front yard. Your house probably is not gonna sell. It's a problem in my district in certain areas. It was brought to me by a group of citizens in my district, and that is why the ordinance is here today. So I ask you to vote for this. It may help you in your district one day.
Mr. President, I wanted to ask the chief to come up for a moment. Chief, with an ordinance like this, although it's on the books, does the officer have the option to use his discretion?
Yes, sir. Yeah, you don't ever, you don't do anything that takes away officer discretion. So they always have that.
Okay, and so if a. Okay, and so if a neighbor complains, and the officer does not give a citation, then what, what difference did it make? Officer going out?
Well, it gives him the option to write a citation where, right now, we don't have that. The police can't, we can't show up and write any type of citation for parking unless it's in the street. That's the, the, the code enforcement side of the city. That's not us.
Right, right.
So with an ordinance like this, it would give them the ability to, not saying that they have to, you know, it just, you've got officer discretion. I don't know how else to put it. If it's a continuing problem, you could take care of it. If it's a one-time deal, and you can go knock on the door and say, hey, would you please move your vehicle, and they do, that's fine. But if you continue to go out there time after time again, at least you have the ability to take action, where right now, we do not.
Do, do you know of any statistics?
I do not.
That you get complaints from residents regarding?
I can look for you, but I don't know it off the top of my head.
I would be more than happy to put this on here again, and I could probably have about 300 people show up at the next meeting that live in District One, if y'all would like.
I, I think even statistically, it would be hard to get numbers because we're not going to respond because there's nothing we can do. It's at, at the.
Plus, you don't have the manpower to respond.
That's correct. That's correct.
Brian, that's what I was saying earlier. You know, I think we tried something years and years ago, but you're not going to tax the police car out there and write a ticket for, for being parked in the grass.
And, and, and I understand that, but years and years ago, we weren't a city fighting for every new business and new company that's looking to move into this area. And the first thing that they do is go drive around subdivisions, and they see a bunch of vehicles parked in yards. I wouldn't move my business here. You know, people are wanting to move somewhere to better their life. They don't want to go spend $400,000, $500,000 for a house, and you've got three neighbors all around you that have three and four cars parked in their front yard.
Well.
That's what the unified code of building a house is for, that you put a driveway in. I mean, would you, would you want me to come to your house and park in your front yard?
My opinion is if, probably $300,000, $400,000 house, you're not going to park in your front yard.
Uh, uh, after this, I'll throw you in the car, and we go to South Bossier.
I got enough, I got enough parked in the yard. You know, some of them don't have driveway, some of them have a short driveway, you know? I'll be honest with you. Grandparents, as myself, are raising kids, and I've got, so I've got three of them, two grandparents and a, and a daughter. I'm lucky I have a big driveway. If not, I've never parked on the grass. I never will. But there's some people not that fortunate.
I, I understand that, and that's why it is put in there at the officer's discretion. But it is still there as a tool that the police can use when they do have this problem. I'm sure Mr. Free would like this, being a real estate agent and Mr. Smith, that they're trying to move a property. We've got new people looking to come in for Barksdale, CIC, everything out there, and I'm sure that they don't want to go moving into neighborhoods where there's a bunch of cars parked in front yards. It's not saying that they're going to go over everywhere and just start driving around and writing tickets. It is just another tool that they have in their pocketbook to solve a problem when they are called out about it.
And I understand your point, Brian. I, I'm just going to say my district is mostly a low-income district, and I don't park in the yard, you know? Some of them don't have the room.
Don't park in the yard?
They do. They, they, they do. I don't.
I would assume many of these are rentals as well.
Thank you, chief.
That the landlord's not willing to put a driveway in the front yard.
Every, every house in District One has a driveway.
An additional driveway. I mean, if you have a driveway, you're saying there's a driveway there?
Yeah.
It's empty, and they're just.
No, no, they're ju- it's overflow.
Right.
Some people just like parking in their front yard. I guess it's closer to the front door. I don't know.
Well, I can tell you one thing.
Never, never in 100 years I thought we would be having a debate over something that makes our city look better.
Brian, like I said, I can tell you one thing. Don't touch my grass, okay? You'll get shot.
I mean, I got a bi- I got a, I got a truck, so I can come down there and park in front of it. I mean, it, it's, I just never thought we would have a debate over this.
Cor- correct me if I'm wrong, but this is already in the Code of Ordinances. It, so people could call, and we could send five people that work in the MPC office there that have way more things to do as well. I mean, people are still going to call. You're just opening it, this ordinance just opens it up to a broader employee base to help solve an issue. Voting this down doesn't make it legal to park in a grass. It's still illegal. It'll be illegal today, tomorrow. Vote it down, vote it up, don't matter. It's still illegal. And so you're just opening up who we can send out to help enforce the issue. Would there be any? Mr. Hammonds, would you be willing to, because I've, I've heard from some people who were concerned about the $250 fine. Would you be opening to lowering the fine if that makes it more palatable for the rest of the council to pass this?
Yeah, I think, I mean, Mr. Ray, I mean, how, how would, how would we do that, lowering the fine on that ticket?
If it's already in, on the books, so why do you want to ask something, you know?
You can set the fine.
I have enough problem keeping 18-wheelers out of my.
You, you can set the fine whatever you want to. If it's in the, if it's in that particular ordinance, then that would be the maximum that the judge would have the discretion to impose.
I mean, 25 bucks, same as, isn't that what a seatbelt ticket is?
It depends. I, I don't, I don't have the, the, the clerk's office handles the schedule, so I don't know. But a lot of them are.
I mean, I, I didn't, I didn't put in here what the ticket would cost.
Right.
I just put, I just did the ordinance to give the police officers the discretion to write a ticket. I don't care what you charge for the ticket. I'm just all for making our city look a whole lot better, and when you start driving around, that there's not a bunch of vehicles parked in front yards when we have a city street that you can park on.
And the judge, the judge still has the discretion, even if it says $250. They can not impose a fine, or they can impose a, a much lesser fine. It, that's just, that would be the maximum.
All I was going to add is what's currently on the books is in the code, Section 110-114 is related to recreational vehicles and boats. So that prohibition is currently in the code, but it's not to vehicles. It's just for RVs, boats, things like that.
See, Richard.
Yes, sir.
Somebody got a lawn trailer parked beside their house. Would that count too?
I'm sorry, Councilman Madge, was that like a lawn trailer?
Yeah, back beside the house, a neighbor's house. Would that count too?
Not by, not behind the house.
No, beside the house.
I, I think only, well, beside it, if it, the way it's worded, and I know it, it's worded so that people won't park vehicles in their front yard.
In front yard, in the grass.
Or on their side yard if they're on a corner. And so the, I think the, like, imagine, yeah, well, I'll just use Douglas Drive as an example, because I go through there a lot, and there are a lot of vehicles that are parked in, in yards on Douglas Drive.
It is.
And a lot of them block the sidewalk. But if they, if they're, if they're not on a corner, then this would prohibit the parking of a vehicle on a non-permitted surface in the front yard, meaning they'd have to have a permit to make a larger driveway. If they got a permit for a larger driveway, then they can park on it. They can't park it on, on pavers set in their yard because that's not a permitted surface for parking. But it would prohibit the front yard. It would not prohibit the side under that circumstance unless they were on the corner of Douglas or in any of those other streets that run through there. That would be prohibited on the side if it's the side that also has a sidewalk and is a corner. Am I making sense?
But between two houses.
Between two houses, this would not prohibit it. This only would prohibit it in the front yard. Thank you, Richard. Thank you. Any que- any more questions, audience?
No, y'all didn't ask me to call it.
Come on, Ben.
I, uh.
I know we'd like to see you, Ben.
I get the pleasure of dealing with property standards, and I know, Councilman Williams, you've been dealing with them for, forever. And I don't know all the nuances of the, of the ordinance, perhaps in as much detail as I should, but the general gist being to provide the city with a little more resources in getting these problem areas taken care of that become a source of, you know, pain for property standards. And I, I think using your discretion and how we define that may become a bit of a problem for the legal department, but it's kind of like art, you know? It's hard to, you know, define what it is, but you know it when you see it. And in these cases where you have people parking, you know, excess number of vehicles in their yard, you know when it's a problem, when it's not. You know, I don't, that, my concern being discretion, but if there's something we can do to help property standards and their efforts, you know, in maintaining that, I think it'd be a good thing. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Ben.
Mr. President, I'd like to add, there are plenty of statistics that we can look up that'll show areas that have lots of blight usually have more crime, usually have lower property values, usually have lower income. We could do, by tackling issues that cause blight, we could not only make our city safer, but we could raise the property values of our citizens, making a direct impact on their net worth, making them wealthier. I just, to me, anything we can do that tackles blight is a win, because what'll happen is you ignore issues, and it'll get too far gone, and then you're kicking yourself wishing, my gosh, I wish back on October 8th of '24 I would have passed that, because we've opened Pandora's Box, and now we have a blight problem. So I, I think this is being very proactive, and I would encourage y'all to support it.
Audience, you have any questions, answers? All right, counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Target Venus, Target Venus 1820 East Texas Street. Um, no opinion either way. Another ordinance that was an issue that I just wanted to bring to the attention of the council that you can also thank for this one. When we had the big freeze in 2021, I reached out to my council, councilman at the time. It was Mr. Harvey. We had a family in the Cumberland community who, their landlord didn't pay the water bill, so their water was turned off. And there's an ordinance that penalizes someone for living in a house that doesn't have running wa- water. We can all see why that ordinance is on the books, but in this situation, it was a mother with a newborn and a one-year-old who their landlord didn't pay. And when I reached out to my council member, the assistance that was provided, I'd just say the proper discretion wasn't applied, so law enforcement was sent out. But when they were, that agency, they did exercise their discretion. So that's just a story that I wanted to give to the council to understand that, you know, there are some good laws on the books for very good reasons, but sometimes they can have unintended consequences.
You're, you're so correct. Because like I said, in my district, I, I get calls that, you know, I can't afford to turn my water, you know? I, I'm, I'm lucky, you know, when Judy was here, and I haven't talked to the, the new lady running, I could call her and say, turn this, turn, please turn the water on. Me and Judy had a good relationship, been here a while. I've been here a while. And she would do it, put me down as a, if they don't get paid, I'll pay it, you know? But the, you give them a month or two, they're back on. I mean, they're, they're back ready again. You just got to help people, that's all.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Are we ready to vote now, guys? No, sir, I guess not. Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, Robert Wright, 6307 West Oxford Circle. Am I understanding it correct that if the person that lives in the land, the house, excuse me, bef- does not pay the bill, that the person coming behind them cannot start their own account and then pay that? Am I right on that, or?
Sometimes, I'm not going, like I said, I dealt with Judy a lot, and I, I can't answer your, Amanda, would you like to? I don't think so. Somebody's got to pay that bill, and unless they find them, it's probably not going to get paid.
Yeah, because I would think, excuse me.
I know. Responsibility of whoever needs.
Can we get, can we get them to talk about that after the council?
Yeah, they should be separate accounts, I would think, that the one before, if they didn't pay it, they'd go after them, but the new person would be there. Is that, am I getting that correct?
That it's whoever it is in the, the account holder's name.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, counsel, let's move on, please. Are we ready to roll on number five? All right, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to approve report of change order number one for the municipal complex security improvement projects with an increase of $8,456 for a total contract price of $826,456. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel, any questions? Do we have any questions from the audience? Ben, are, are we done right there, Dan? Very close.
It looks great.
Yeah, it is. Okay, counsel, no questions. Let's cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance approving report of change order number 12 for the construction of Citizens Bank.
We deleted that one.
We did delete that one, sorry. Thank you. Adopt a resolution for public works to fill a kennel worker one position in the animal control division and backfill any vacant position this creates. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring or promotion of a laborer one due to a termination and backfilling any vacant positions this may create in the customer service department. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel, any questions? Questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring or promotion of a recreation maintenance one and backfilling any position this may create for parks and recreation. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, counsel? Questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Mr. Williams?
I hit it. I hit it.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the replacement of one part-time position due to a resignation in the Bossier City Marshal's Office. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, counsel? Questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution endorsing the city's application to the United States Department of Justice to participa- participate in the Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Assistance Program. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, counsel? Questions from the audience?
It is I again. My name's Robert Wright.
Didn't change.
Sir.
You didn't change your name?
6307 West Oxford Circle. Would any of this money, I guess maybe it's a grant, but would any of this money be available to have our police officers' salaries raised, because they're very, 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 very low? And I, I don't know if this would be not, this would be the place, but if not, then I would encourage the council to do that, because our police officers put their lives, lives on jeopardy all the time, and I think it's $32,000. I don't know if that's it, but it's incredibly low. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I don't think we can use that money for that, Mr. Wright, but.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to change the name of portions of Old Benton Road and Hamilton Road to Walter O'Bigby Carriageway. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel, any questions? Questions from the audience? Please cast your vote. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of Bossier City and the State of Louisiana Division of Administration, Office of Facility Planning and Control. First and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Council, any questions?
Just a brief, quickly.
And this was from the Capitol Outlay Bill, which was Act Five of the twenty twenty-four regular legislative session. We are, we were given a million dollars of state funds for improvements to Benton Road. So, um, I can go ahead and give you a little synopsis on number sixteen, because there are more CEAs. Those are with the Treasury. They are for additional line item appropriations of two hundred and forty-five thousand for lighting improvements, fifty thousand dollars for panel replacement on Sunflower Boulevard, and an additional five hundred thousand dollars for Benton Road as well. So it's just the different agencies with the state, but they all require CEAs for us to get those funds.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Any question from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the appointment of Mary Ward as the Director of Parks and Recreation to be effective upon retirement of the current director. First and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Who made the motion?
Chris.
I did.
Can, Chris, can I ask you to rescind it? I'm, I was going to continue this item. Uh, Mayor, you want to jump in there a little?
It's already been motioned in second already.
Well, I'm-
Not if he rescinds it.
Uh, you're wanting to continue this for two weeks?
Well, and I'll tell you why. Mr. Montgomery wants to, he's not here, he wants to be here to say favorable things, you know, uh, so he asked me if we could continue the item.
Okay, then, then I'll rescind.
So, motion to continue until October twenty-second?
Yeah, our next meeting.
Who makes that motion?
What was the reason again?
Mr. Montgomery wants to-
Mr. Montgomery wants to speak in favor of Ms. Ward.
In support of- In support of her.
Okay, well, do we have the votes now?
Mr. Montgomery wants to speak in favor of supporting Ms. Ward, and he's not here. And he wants his vote on the record.
Who makes that motion?
I guess. Mr. Williams.
Did you make that, or?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I'll make the motion to continue.
But he's not here, right? He's not here, right? I mean, so we're going to wait for him to come back?
He asked me, and, uh, I said I would throw it out there. Do we have a second?
Oh, yeah. Motion, second.
Any questions, Council, other than that? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion to continue is carry. Adopt a resolution authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of Bossier City and the Louisiana Department of Treasury and the State of Louisiana in order to receive funds appropriated by the Louisiana State Legislature in the twenty twenty-four regular legislative session. First and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Council, any questions? Questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance proposing amendments to the city charter of the City of Bossier City as recommended by the Charter Review Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, Council? Questions from the audience?
Cassie Rogers, Bossier City, Louisiana, seven eleven twelve. Contrary to popular belief, I actually, um, if this is just the changes to the charter without the term limits, I think this is a great idea. They did do a lot of hard work. However, this is, if this also includes the term limits, it's not actual term limits. It is only sitting out one, one term, and then coming right back and doing everything over again. Term limits is not just about voting for a candidate and voting for who and which. When you run unopposed every time, that's an impossible feat. However, comma, it will encourage other people and the next generation to step up to the plate. I ask you to not, or to vote no on this ordinance. Thank you.
Mr. President, I, I would like to continue this too, since we didn't get this until two o'clock today. Um, I have not even had a chance to even read through these. And for, to sit here to vote yes or no whether or not to send this through, I would ask that we continue this till October twenty-seventh also.
Mr. Darby would have to remove his motion. Withdraw his motion.
Mr. Attorney, the, um, the council action does not impact this one way or the other, because we're, we're, we can't amend it, we can't revise it. We're just voting, uh, to send it to the ballot. And matter of fact, I don't even think we sent it to the ballot, because we didn't, we didn't pass the other part of it for this commission.
Yeah. Um, this is, this gets on the ballot in two parts. One is a resolution. The other is the ordinance that contains the proposed amendments or changes. Without the resolution to the bond commission, which was not added to the agenda by unanimous vote, then, um, this, uh, you know, this would be a first reading. So, of, of this, and, um, but without the resolution, it doesn't go, it, it will not go to the bond commission with the request to be sent to the Secretary of State to be put on a ballot. Now, you can vote on the first reading today, and then you can come back in two weeks, and then you'd have a second reading plus a resolution. Um, if you, if you wanted to, um, uh, move forward in that manner, or you could, but the ordinance part of it, it, it is an ordinance. You don't have discretion, but an ordinance does require two readings.
All right, that's fine. I'll, I'll, if, if we're going to have two readings on it, then that, that's fine.
Councilman Hammonds, if it, if it helps alleviate any concerns you would have, the, the language that's in here is the same that was, it's the exact same language that was passed last Friday by the Charter Commission, but also it's the same language that was adopted by the Charter Commission back on September the sixteenth.
Yeah, I know. I, I just would like the opportunity to, I mean, you, we didn't, we didn't see these until we walked in our chambers today.
Well, I, I agree, but that was because there was, today's pretty much the, the very last day to get on the December seventh ballot.
Yeah, and I, I just, if we would have had these sooner to, to look over, um, but we didn't, so if we're going to have two readings, then that, that's fine.
Well, this was going to be on the agenda a month ago, whatever the date was, but we had to pull it, there had been a complaint, so we had to have another meeting to address that complaint, so. But all the language is exactly the same.
Yeah, I, I, I understand. I would just like to read it for myself, though.
I have a motion by Mr. Darby and a second by Mr. Williams to introduce an ordinance proposing amendments to the city charter of the City of Bossier City as recommended by the Charter Review Commission.
Council, y'all, y'all okay with that? All right, cast your vote. Any questions from the audience before we do this?
Motion carries.
Where's Mr. Cameraman? Stand up up there. Sit down, we don't need you here.
And Council, we have a, um, a workshop immediately following this meeting. I think you wanted to take a five-minute break, Mr. Williams, but we have a, a workshop concerning the twenty twenty-five capital and operating budgets proposed from the administration immediately following this meeting.
All right, we're going to take a five-minute break, go get our books and do other things?
I think Mayor Chandler has some. You have some? Uh, never mind, he does it.
Mayor, you don't have nothing?
You really want me to bring that up?
I thought you had something to say, I'm sorry.
I mean, you really, I mean, you want me to bring it up, I'll bring it up.